Hi, and welcome to the next in our list of interviews of candidates who have contested races in the May 15th primary. I'm with James Yarnell, who is running for Springfield City Council in Ward Two. And we already interviewed his opponent, Steve Moe. There was a third candidate, Eric Whedon, who never completed the signature gathering process, so he's out. So it's a two-way race right now, and I want to welcome you to community television. So I guess we'll start off with, who are you? You know, education, you know, work history, where'd you grow up, those kinds of things. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm a lifelong resident of Springfield. I was born in Portland, and we moved here when I was three, so I've been here a very long time. I've seen a lot of changes in Springfield, some of them being good, some of them haven't, but nonetheless, I've lived through them, and I'm happy to share my thoughts.
Oh, okay. Well, so what did you do for work? I assume you retired at this point?
Yes, sir, I am. You know, I'm wondering, are my glasses glaring any? I don't really need them.
Nope, nope, they're fine.
All right. Well, I've been a mechanical laboring type person, a hard hat working for, for, for a living. I have had responsibilities for management and decision-making in my career, and I'm very proud of it. The experience has been pretty widespread, because here at home, there have been years when jobs in my profession just were not available.
So this profession, when you say hard task, what sorts of things have you built?
Well, I started out as an apprentice for plumbing, and I got my state certification and became a journeyman plumber.
Right.
And I put the plumbing in a good many homes and buildings in Springfield, so I identify with those buildings, and they're my children, so to speak.
Yeah.
And I changed to industrial pipe fitting in later years, which took me all over the country. I've been back east, down south, north, and places in between. I'm not going to go into all the states and things that I've done, but it has given me a wide exposure to many cultures.
So many people owe you when they go to the bathroom?
They what?
You're the one who put their bathroom in.
Oh, I got you. Took me a while to figure that one out.
So...
Yes, I've had people come up and they say, "Oh, I recognize you. You worked on my house," or "You fixed my faucet," or you, you know, whatever it was. And that, that starts the conversation, and we have a good time.
Cool. Well, good. So what is inspiring you to run for city council?
Well, my age, for one thing. I'm getting older. And if I don't get proactive now, I'm going to lose my shot at it. So I'm a little bit tired of the same old thing being offered for consideration, year after year, and sort of expecting different results, but nothing much has changed in downtown Springfield. Those businesses that are new were funded with investment money of the owners, the capital investment money that they used. Was not necessarily responsible of urban renewal, when urban renewal was passed years Everybody thought it was going to kick right off, but Glenwood took way, way ahead of us, and it's doing a fantastic job on my side.
No, they're making some progress there. They've got some new businesses in, and...
Definitely. That's a good thing.
Yeah. The, I think the EMX going through there has probably helped, because it brings some better transportation. But, okay, so you're looking at the downtown as renewal as a key issue for what you think is important? Are there other things?
Well, yes, there are a great many other things. It's the entire city. There are issues that need to be addressed, that could be for the betterment of all in one way or another.
Such as? See, I'm going for specifics.
Well, it's all right. I foster the idea for safe streets, for instance. I know other communities that I've been in have made certain streets, not necessarily the arterials. They're with bicycle lanes and things like this, and I just don't think bicycles and automobiles on heavy traffic really mix the best, but there are a lot of other streets where you seldom see a car. Now, as you've noticed, I'm wheelchair-bound. Now, I've traveled many, many of those off-streets on purpose, because the sidewalks are somewhat in disrepair. They're cracked, they have bumps, they're uneven, it's hard for people with strollers, walkers, or even myself with wheelchairs.
It's tough on bicycles, too.
On bicycles, definitely. So these safe streets are signed, signage needs to take place, and possibly some markings on the streets themselves, a little paint, that these are areas where cars yield to pedestrians.
Yeah.
I've not really encountered a car. They very politely pull over and just go around. Now, this will give children, for instance, a great way to get to school and not worry about traffic.
Well, yeah, I think there's, there's some room for improvement there.
Anyhow, it'll take many conversations with staffs and other people, perhaps, to accomplish this, because it's new.
So other, other issues that you think need to be addressed or improved by the city?
Where do I begin?
Wherever you choose.
Well, urban renewal is very definitely high on my list, because when it was first passed, the property values that you pay in property values when income tax comes, the property values are frozen. So year after year, property values rise.
Right.
It's the difference between where it was frozen at and what the current taxation rate is. When you subtract the two, the difference is given to urban renewal, and that's how these things get funded. I don't think many people really understand that a great deal. Now, as I say, Springfield's urban renewal was passed many years before Glenwood's. And to my knowledge, I don't really believe there's been very much used of that fund. There really isn't a good reason why. We do have, that we have made some progress as far as the city is concerned. There was a time when shopping malls, malls were built, and that did provide some employment and added income, and certainly some extra money to the budget process for the city.
But it had the impact of kind of wiping out the downtown.
Correct. I was just getting to that, because nobody foresaw the fact there would be fewer feet on the ground to do the shopping for turnover of the goods, or the services of professional people, you know, in downtown. And so additionally, the Main Street traffic became just a way to get to someplace else.
Uh-huh, yeah.
It came in from the east and left the west, and very few, if any, looked either way at the storefronts. So the result was our storefronts sat empty for a good many years, and they got in disrepair. And it will take quite a bit for a new owner to bring him up to city code standards for this business activity. So it's wide open, everything is possible.
Yeah.
It's only when all the ideas are put on the table that decisions can be made to produce a vibrant economy in downtown.
Yeah, I think urban renewal was not a good thing for many cities. You know, they didn't do very well with it. You know, and again, taking the sister city Eugene, when Valley River opened, that was the death knell. Valley River and Gateway were the death knells for the Eugene downtown, and similarly Springfield. So what do we do about that?
Well, recognizing what I just spoke to, that cause and effect, the shopping malls of Gateway, the Jerry's and Walmart areas, the Thurston areas, people didn't feel it was necessary to come downtown. But additionally, Glenwood is set to prosper, and it will be a magnificent draw for shoppers. They'll have the up-to-date, really fine buildings and merchandise to pick from and all of that. So I see Glenwood as becoming the Glenwood Mall. I'm concerned that it may turn into Springfield City Center.
Okay.
And I think that would be a big mistake, because our city center was founded by strong industrial, or not industrial. Our early citizens were, that fostered the town and saw the need for a town, were hard-working lumberjacks and mill workers and things of this nature.
Yeah.
And that is a proud past. We have to really respect that. And by doing a good job with urban renewal, renewing the downtown, we received from the folks in the past their legacy.
Right.
It's our turn now to provide a well-designed downtown for the future generations. This can be our legacy.
So you were talking, you used the phrase "the past" a number of times. So tell us what Springfield was like back years ago.
Well, it was pretty small. It went probably from Mill Street to Tenth. Lots of open fields. My dad tells me of, he was born in Thurston, or up in the Mulholland Valley, up in the Thurston area, but, or in the Mulholland area. And there were Indian tribes there. He played with the Indians, and there were hop fields, beautiful hop fields. I remember, it's really fun to think back on it, there was Lucky's Tavern right downtown between Fifth and Fourth, on the north side of Main Street. Well, I had newspapers. I didn't have a newspaper out delivering. I just got a bunch of newspapers and went out and stood in front of that tavern, and I shouted, "Get your newspapers here, get the latest news, dah, 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 dah." Well, those new workers in there, they'd come out and buy all my papers every day just to get rid of me. Yeah, that was really fun.
Well, that was, that was quite, that was quite a while ago. Are you old enough to remember World War One? Or not one, World War Two and, and all of that?
Yes, I sure am.
Yeah, because I came along in 53, so I'm a youngster.
I remember the war bonds and the margarine that you had, the color you could add to the butter and pretend it was butter.
Yeah.
And you'd try to save it to make sure it went far enough.
Yeah. And, yeah, that was very different times. I started in, I was born in 53, and I do remember quite a bit about the 50s, but I was on the East Coast. I was in Bristol, Connecticut, starting out. But the world has changed a lot. There was a downtown in Bristol, and it had a bunch of stores with wooden floors and stuff stacked up to the ceilings and the ladders that went down the length of it so they could get to their stock and all that kind of stuff. But that all, most of that just disappeared during the 60s urban renewal. And so there was a whole part of America that just got wiped out. But, but it started out, the first supermarket in that area, which wasn't even very big, started to impact the other stores, and then you got the first mall on Farmington Ave, which kind of started to impact the downtown quite a bit. And it wasn't even a very big mall. It was just a single strip mall with two stores in it, two big stores in it. But the world has changed a whole bunch, and I assume that Springfield saw much of that same kind of change.
Yes, you're correct.
So, you know, and it also came along with a change in people's values and how they viewed community and life along, along with that. So I'm probably not telling you anything new, it's just, you know, the country has changed a lot over the past, you know, 50, 60 years.
You couldn't have said it better. I appreciate hearing that.
Yeah. So that just makes me another old guy.
Well, you know, the values of the past, as you're pointing out here, are getting lost year by year by year, and the new ways of thinking and speaking are taking over. And so you have to keep up with the current trends as far as that relates, or you're going to be a stranger in your own, in your own space.
Well, I think, I think I am to some extent, and...
Not in mine's book, you're not.
The, you know, we're just a couple of old guys. So there's, I mean, the, the world has sort of changed, and it's changed a lot. It's sort of been coming, but in the last few years, we've really seen the rise of kind of tribalism. You know, this sense of our group and anybody who's not part of our group, who doesn't say the right things in the right way, needs to be punished, needs to be exiled. And that really troubles me.
Yes, it does me, too. I think you've touched upon some of these school problems where there's violence takes place and guns are used.
But if it wasn't guns, it would be knives.
It's a state of mind.
Yeah, really.
And, you know, I think really that that can be addressed. The state of mind is very early in life, and if it's impacted strongly enough with the preschool, kindergarten, early stages of teaching, and I would love to see it in the education thing of honesty and loyalty and doing the right thing and not concentrating on misbehavior. Now, what can I do about that?
I don't know. That's, that's why you're here.
I'm glad you asked.
Yes.
I think this will even come as a surprise to my wife, but it is my intention, should I be elected, and I'm not quite sure that I can overcome the advantage that Steve has, my opponent. But should I be elected, I see that as an opportunity to be invited to classrooms on occasion for the city councillor to speak to these first, second, third, you know, the early grades. And hopefully that will impact strong enough that they'll realize that the greatest gift and the biggest reward is when you're in service to others.
Yeah. Are you familiar at all with Jordan Peterson, for example? There's a, okay, there's sort of this battle that's been going on. The social justice people have sort of asserted themselves, and now there's a counter, the anti-SJW movement. And he's become one of the main speakers for that. He started out, I guess it's about, it's about a year and a half now. Canada, he's, he's Canadian, is a professor of psychology at the University of Toronto. And Canada has passed a law called Bill C-16, which makes it a crime to not use the prone, the preferred pronouns of transgender people. And he said, "Enough of that," and sort of put some videos up on YouTube saying, "That's a bad idea." So in other words, what was, what was happening is this concept of compelled speech, where you must say, in other words, there's, there's been prohibitions on speech for a long time, but this is a new, is new territory, because it's compelled speech. You must say these things, and if you don't say these things, we're going to punish you. And I think that that's coming along, there's a lot more of that happening in the world right now. But that sort of put him on the stage, and he's just about at a million subscribers on YouTube after a year and a half. And that's when I discovered him, was when he put up those videos, and, and so I watched, you know, he put up three of them, and I watched all three of them, and, but his whole thing, he's been out on the lecture circuit. He's published a book, The Twelve Rules for Life. And he's on the lecture circuit talking about this kind of stuff. And his main thing that he's essentially been selling is responsibility. In other words, that you measure your life for your contribution based on responsible behavior. Simple things like, well, how can you make the world better? Clean your room, okay? Clean your room, get your life together, you know? If you're, if you're not taking care of yourself, maybe it's time to get some exercise, go to the gym, you know, stop drinking Mountain Dew, you know, lose some weight, and basically make yourself into the kind of person who's worthy. And that's a message that has not been put out there.
Compulsed.
Yeah, for a long time. It's like, I have a, the message has been, "I have a right, and I'm offended, and you owe me," and that kind of stuff. And he's saying, "Excuse me." No. The measure of your life is responsibility, is serving other people, is...
Yes.
You know, but serving other people in, in a positive manner, you know, getting, you do things to make the world better, and...
That's where the rewards are.
Yeah. That's where you provide meaning in your life. I mean, we have this whole drive to nihilism, nihilism, however you want to pronounce it, where life is meaningless and all the rest of it. No. Life, the only meaning you have is what you yourself produce, what you choose to, to value and put out, and the meaning of life is making the world a better place. And, you know, so volunteering, serving, you know, essentially serving other people, that's, that's where meaning comes from. And it's a good message. I think it's well worth listening to, and it's, it's kind of good to hear you suggesting that that's a, that's a reward in itself.
Well, thank you for that. I would appreciate if you mentioned his name again for me, because I'll certainly be looking into that.
Yeah, his name is Jordan Peterson.
And you find him on YouTube.
Oh, yeah. If you type in Jordan, he'll show up on YouTube as number one.
All right. Well, great. I'll be visiting then and making myself aware, because the things you've been talking about is the gas that makes my motor run.
Yeah.
These are the things that are important to me, is that I am responsible for my own life, and I take responsibility for it. And I have the way of encouraging others along the way to do the same.
Yeah.
And as I'm sure Jordan will point out, did I say that right, Jordan? There, there is a methodology in your approach, how you capture the imagination of those you're trying to reach. And it's inspiration that we're talking about here.
Yeah. It's, well, it's, it's the whole question of adding meaning to your life. I mean, there, there were scripts in life before about what it means to be a man, what it means to be a good person, what it means to do all these things. And a lot of that has decayed in recent years, that we've, we've challenged it.
Yeah, you, you know, some of that created havoc, too.
Yeah.
Because you'd get so wound up with, "These are the right things. You must do this, or you will burn forever somewhere."
Well, that's, that's the, that's the sort of religious authoritarian thing playing.
It is, and the point is, you are the master of your own destiny. That, there's a, focus on the things that work. That's the thing that separates accomplishment from failure.
Yeah.
Focus on things that work. And if you run into opposition trying to make that happen, it gives you the greatest opportunity to just step back and rethink that which you're trying to promote. You're not reaching your objective. Maybe you need to try a different approach.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's just conscious awareness.
Yeah, I think it is, but at the same time, I think that today, there's, well, it's always been true that anyone who takes a leadership role will be attacked. I mean, that's, that's been going on since day one. But I think it's, it's changed in its nature today, in the sense that there's lots and lots of people sitting around criticizing everyone else. And their house is hardly in order, in the sense of, you know, clean your, clean your room, as being a metaphor for the quality of your life. I mean, if you're talking about, say, relationship advice, I mean, what you've got is, is, you know, take between men and women. I mean, the issue is, both people should wake up every morning and say, "Is my being with this other person making my life better?" And if the answer to that is no, it's time to get out of the relationship, okay? If the answer is yes, then your job for that day is very clear. You have to do whatever it takes so that your partner, the following morning, when so that your partner the following morning, when they ask that question, says, yes, this person being in my life makes my life better. And so it becomes very, you know, complex issues become very clear because you don't have to figure, it's, you know what it is you need to do in order to have that person say, yeah, you know, my life is better because, you know, you're in my life. And so that, I think, is the thing that people are missing. It's like, instead of saying, well, what can this person do for me? It's, it's what can I do for this person? And it's not so much doing things for that person as making yourself a person who is worthy of love.
Agreeable.
Well, it's not just being agreeable, sometimes.
Pleasant to be around.
Pleasant, pleasant is good, but you don't always have to agree because maybe agreeing isn't the right thing for that person.
Well, there'll always be disagreements at any level of life and under, on any circumstance. The thing is how you handle it.
Yeah. Yep.
You can fly off the handle or you can be patient and rethink it. You know, I've got to mention here at this point the tendency I have seen over and over and over again by a preponderance of the people. They can articulate each and everything that creates a problem. This is bad, this is bad, duh, 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 and go on and on and on and never even come close to thinking about a solution to it.
Exactly. Right.
It's, it's just energy wasted.
I keep, I keep asking people, well, how are you gonna solve this? How are you gonna solve this? How are you gonna solve this?
Well, do you really want to?
That's, that's a huge question. I mean, a lot of, in my, in my personal work experience, a lot of times people would say, well, we want you to solve this problem. And I say, oh, okay, I know how to do that. That should be easy. And, you know, a year later or two years later, the problem's still there. And so the question then comes down. I actually, I actually asked this in a, in a job interview. This is right after I finished my MBA. And I did a job interview and I said, well, we need people to do this and this and this. And I said, oh, okay. Well, what is it about your company that you haven't let anybody solve these problems before? Okay, so are you gonna let somebody solve these problems or not? And the guy just looked at me and said, there's the door.
Well.
Yeah.
To reflect upon what you're saying, it kind of jiggled my memory quite a little bit because everything that matters to me, the core belief of my values about this, that, and the other thing, I learned from older people that were smarter than I, that shared their views with me. And it's my turn now to reciprocate now and try to emulate the best of the best. And, you know, those are people that spent their time to show me this way as opposed to that way. They shine.
Yeah.
They just shine. I'll never forget them.
Yeah. Instead of, instead of somebody telling you what to do, the people that have the biggest impacts are the ones who show you what to do.
Well, they didn't necessarily spell it out and make it easy.
Yeah.
The old timers that I was running with, they expected performance.
Yeah.
I ain't here to carry around on a popsicle stick. I'll help you out. Get it done.
Yeah. And that, that's one of the problems today. I mean, how do we put this? They're not running, we have, we have a television studio here with lots of toys and they used to, they used to have classes on video production at the school. They don't anymore. And so a couple of times I've sort of said, okay, well, we could put together a video club or something like that. And you guys, you know, so some students will say, yeah, and I'm interacting with them. And it's like, okay, well, you have to do something. You know, in other words, I'm not gonna just sit around and entertain you, you know, once a week. But if you guys wanna put together and produce a short film, you know, I'll be happy to work through with you. And which means that you gotta sit down, you gotta write a script. So what do you need to know to write a decent script? And the bottom line is they just never did anything. And I'm finding that more and more and more. So I've done it here and about 10 year, well, it's like 10, 11 years ago, right after I moved to Eugene, I met Mike Fisher, who's now persona non grata, at A3.
I know Mike.
Yeah, at A3. And, and that was all a very unfortunate experience with all of that. But, um, so I, I met him and in the, what I was looking to do was to get a screenplay workshop with some actors. It was my sixth screenplay that I'd written and I was looking for a group of actors to see what it sounded like, shall we say, and, and get some more suggestions about how to improve it. But in the process of looking, I went to the Wildish Theatre and met Mike Fisher. And in the conversation we had, I mentioned that I did some 3D animation. And so I get a call a few days later and says, you wanna teach a class? I was like, well, okay, sure. But the bottom.
He's certainly proactive, really. He took, jumped right on stuff. He didn't wait around.
He really did. And so the thing is that, so I taught there for four semesters. And the number of students who actually did anything, I had, you know, it was only a couple of them out of, out of all the students that went through. And one of them was just, you know, who was pretty much the person who did the most was just arrogant and obnoxious and, and lording it over other students and look how cool I am, you know, basically running court in my classroom, holding court in my classroom. And, but the, but the thing is that a lot of those kids, and I've seen some of them since, a lot of those kids could have gained a set of skills if they actually sat down and did a little bit of work, that they could have parlayed into a decent job. And they just never did anything. And I, I'm finding that more and more and more. To some extent, it was true when I was younger, but I think that there was a tendency for more people to be active in the sense that here's an opportunity and go after it and do it. And I don't see that today with, with people.
Well.
They just don't do anything. Except complain.
They're distracted.
Yeah.
They got too many toys to play with, electronic toys and things like this. There's too many visual aids that really answer any question. Siri?
Yeah.
How do you spell Ken? So that is a problem. The way to address it really is to whet the appetite. I have had so many apprentices that have been sent to me just because they were about to be washed out as being non-responsive or not caring. I'm proud to say, I don't know, youngsters have many teachers. And all of these things, one thing piles up on another, but about a couple, three, then, well, more than that. I'm not gonna go into the number specifics, but one of them became business manager for the statewide Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Union in 290 in Portland. And at that same period of time, a friend of his I had as an apprentice got on the Labour Council where labour disputes would come up and be arbitrated. And there was a time in my local union when our contract, we would agree with the employers, had to be sent in for federal approval. And it came back with some strings attached on it. You will integrate minorities or we will take over your union. And the Seattle Union was taken over. They came in and grabbed all their books and brought in just unqualified workers just because they were a minority.
Yep.
I saw that coming before it actually happened. And I stood up and I said, listen, fellows, we've got a golden opportunity here to pick the best of the best. We should take, take advantage of that and not disregard this. This is a great opportunity to, to move forward. I got so much flack from that. It was, why don't you resign and get out of here and disappear? We don't want anything to do with you. You're gonna do that, you know, have minorities and women in our, in our rank and file. What's the matter with you? You know, it's just like the, the unrest for civil rights at one point in our history. It was terrible. The very first one that came in, what's it called really? He's now superintendent quality stuff. It's just the opportunity. You whet their appetite. Give them the chance and let them go.
Yeah.
What more can I say? I mean, I could carry on, but it's neither here nor there.
Yeah, so, I mean, there was, there was a period in time where the society did have a lot of barriers to entry for various different people. And, and I think that that's, the fact that we've removed that stuff is, is enormous. But people have to be qualified for doing the work. If they're not qualified for doing the work, they should not be, you know? In other words, if you want it, you gotta work for it.
Well, I don't wanna interrupt you, but the thing is, is that along with came a, the ladies. And they took to welding because a lot of times the workload might be a little bit heavy and strong and dangerous. And so they took to welding. Now, women have coordination, patience, and they can just really put the smoothest weld on you'd ever seen. And you gotta give them credit for their ability.
Well, some women can, some women can't, some men can, some men can't. I mean, it's the world of two by two matrices. Male, female, does it, doesn't do it, people in all four boxes.
You either survive by what you do right.
Yeah.
Or you fail by what you do wrong.
So, you know, you give people a chance and.
Yes.
But if, but the thing is, if they, if they do the job, fabulous. If they don't do the job, it's time to either get some more training or move on.
Well, that training is available.
Yeah, it is.
Take advantage of it.
Yeah. And there, there's all kinds of, you know, if, if you're willing to do the work, there's all kinds of people around who are generally willing to help you. And so, and there's nothing that inspires someone to help you as much as, as a solid effort.
Yes, you know, there are individuals, I'm not gonna say young, old, or in between.
Yeah.
That are just self-starters. You don't have to push them. You just make a suggestion and they take off on their own.
Yep. But there's not enough of them.
There's more than you think. I used to think that the good old days were gone forever. I've changed my mind on that.
Okay.
My friend, it's up to you and it's up to me to make sure that the message gets there. And for all you viewers out there that feel the same way, you've got the same responsibility. Pass it on.
Pay it forward. Pay it forward. So, yeah, I guess, I guess at this point, I mean, the thing is that there's a lot of people who are just critical in, in the world. They're sort of professional victims. And the, the society not only tolerates that kind of stuff, but unfortunately, over the past few years, it's been encouraging it. And I'm, you know, if, if you want something, work for it.
Yes. That's the job of parenting.
Yep.
Clearly it goes right to that because it seems as though it's fallen to the point where, why don't you go out and play in the yard and have some fun? I'm watching a TV show.
Yeah.
Now, I had, my wife and I have been married 57 years. We've raised four children. My son passed away. He was a welder. And he was a very fine welder, got into too many hotspots in the nuclear energy by having to deliver a picture-perfect weld that wouldn't stand x-rays and all of that. And he passed away. I had three girls. My youngest is employed by Nike and is sent on missions to other countries to evaluate the work process in the factories in other countries and bring back her opinion.
Right.
The next daughter, she works for Providence in Portland. And she is one of their high actuaries that does the accounting and, and understanding what the numbers mean and developing what it takes to keep things going.
Right.
My oldest, you may remember, she was the drama director for Sheldon a few years ago. She had a terrible accident and she was on an inspection tour up in the upper reaches of the auditorium, got her hair caught in a fan and ripped her scalp right off to the bone. That was the end of her career. Now, she had 13 years of very high quality performances. Equal to Ed Ragazzino's. The stadium was, or the auditorium was always full.
Yeah.
Overflowing. Fred Grass was there. She is still, just to finish off on that, is on so many medications that sometimes she's not really aware of what's going on around her. But when she's off of her high-powered medications, she's just the normal girl she's always been. And I would encourage people that are acquainted with her to stay in contact. She needs the exposure.
Yeah.
So I have six grandchildren. One was a granddaughter who recently got married. They live in Hawaii. He's in the service. Another grandson is in the Navy. And he's responsible for the nuclear performance of the propelling of the sun from place to place. So, and he loves it. He's doing, I can't say very much about it. Because, you know, loose lips sink ships. But the other one now, another grandson is aeronautical. And he is in the business right now of repairing. now of repairing airplanes to keep them flying. And he just went through an experience of aircraft that the folks he works for had built and it had a problem. It kept blowing relays and that governed the flaps, how they'd be counted on. And he worked on that for a week, blowing relays, rolling relays, blowing relays, broil on relays. And I said to him somewhere along the line, it's all those little things that matter so much. And he said, I got right down in there where those relays were. And I happened to hear him actuate and I turned my head and look up and he saw one of move, you know, the part that's supposed to move?
Yeah.
Make a spark.
Ah.
And he said, ah, the mechanical movements would bind up on something. And so he had to re-shorten that a little bit so it wouldn't touch anything, plane flying side. Great kid. I mean, he's, he's so new to it, but he stayed with it until he found it. Give him credit for that.
Yeah.
So there are many, many stories like this all over the nation of young people that are doing marvelous jobs.
Yep.
We shouldn't be discouraged. We just need to pat them on the back more often.
I think that's probably true. But I'm sort of, I'm sort of looking at a lot of this kind of middle class, you know, people college educated, who have this attitude that they need to represent other people, you know, and complain about the circumstances of other people. And I, and I think that that's the sort of, you know, again, social justice thing that's, that's playing right now, which I find somewhat troubling, that they're, they're trying to pick a cause that they can champion. And at a certain level, you go, yeah, that's good, but at another level, it's, you know, get your own life in order.
Some of that self-gratification.
Yeah. It's, the term that's being used these days...
Hey, look at me!
Is virtue signaling. Yeah, I'm virtuous.
And, and the thing of it is, the listeners are not aware or really thoughtful to the degree they should of what an impact that might have this way or that. They just, they're too accustomed to listening to TV and their little electronic things and it just goes in one ear and out the other. Well, that sounded okay. Like you counter it, offer a different opinion.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know. The number of people that, you know, are walking down the sidewalk doing this and, and, you know, they're about to bump into you and you have to sort of stop and get out of their way because they're completely unaware of where they are in the world, is going up. And I don't think that that's essentially a good thing.
No, it's not.
And, you know, to, to engage with reality, I think, is a, is a more useful application of one's time, one's limited time on the planet, shall we say.
Well, you know, everybody is a little bit different, you know? It's, it's also a person's choice if they choose to recreate in that way, to just kind of let them daydream for a while. They're responsible for whatever happens. They can't lay it off on nothing else, not even the toy they're playing with.
Yeah.
And that's the message that I want to bring to the classroom. You're going to have a lot of temptations in front of you and you have to choose which are productive and which are destructive.
Uh huh. Yeah. Well, I think that there's definitely a need for, you know, people to be talking to young people. I'm not sure how well it'll be received by the younger crowd. You know, maybe I simply haven't found the formula yet, but I think that there's, and I've actually gotten this out of a lot of young people. Well, you know, you older folks, you're the ones who created all the problems in the world.
Yeah.
And you see, you've got that. So why do we want to listen to you? Because you're all a bunch of losers and you caused, caused all kinds of trouble. But the reality is, I mean, it's, it's, it's the older people who built this building.
Yes, yes.
You're inside a building that was the product of, you know, other people's labor. And the car that you drive and the cell phone that you use and your smartphone and all of that was designed by a bunch of people, especially when you're talking about essentially if you want to go after the sort of white male thing. You know, today, it's, it's, you're a white male is a pejorative for many people. And, but the reality is, you should look and say, okay, what is it that the white males built? And it's, it's essentially all of this civilization that we, that we see here, following the Enlightenment, you know, all the liberal institutions, the freedom that you enjoy, the ability to walk around. I remember an interview with Allen Ginsberg years ago and this kid came up, he was, Allen Ginsberg was talking about this, this kid had come up to him and he had a mohawk and a skateboard and piercings and tattoos and stuff. And, you know, he, he goes, well, the Beat, the Beat poets never really did anything and all you guys just sat around in the 50s and did nothing. And he just sat quietly and then he, so Ginsberg didn't really respond to him. But later on in the interview, he said, you know, we, we, the Beats are responsible for the fact that you can walk down the street looking like that and people don't beat you to death with a baseball bat.
Point well made.
You know, it's, there's been a lot of change. There's been a lot of people who did a lot to make those changes, but the society has made progress. I mean, if you look back at the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, the infant mortality rate was 75%. So only one out of four kids that got born survived to age five. You know, today, the infant mortality rate is, you know, a couple percent. So just a huge, most of the kids who are born survive. Just a huge, huge, huge improvement. And that's basically white males studying science, learning medicine, building systems, building hospitals, you know, putting all of this stuff together, improving nutrition, improving sanitation, improving all the rest of this stuff to build societies that are worth living in, that are worth, that are, are worth defending. And so we've, we're down to about 20 seconds. Any closing thoughts?
Well, I need to respond to that because we need to be inclusive, diversity.
Yes.
And recognizing the abilities and the wherewithal of the minorities and the ladies and all of this, the different cultures there are. For downtown Springfield, I see that it really needs to be something different than malls, Eugene, or anything else anywhere. We have the opportunity, it's already starting to foster a little bit, where we have a multicultural environment downtown and we need to expand upon that. Now, could it be...
Well, we're sort of, we're sort of out of time, so...
That the renewal of, of Main Street could create an environment with wider sidewalks, with a single lane of traffic, so that it gets to be more like a European eatery where things are out on a thing, where people can go and recreate.
I think that would be a positive effect. So it's been a pleasure having a conversation. I want to thank you and I wish you the best on your campaign. And we'll see folks in the next video.